Dollars an hour.
That, I don't know. I'll ask Mr. Van Detten or Mr. Miller.
Mr. Zerlang, I'll attempt to answer the question and Mr. Van Detten can back up. The way that this works is that when you bid out the work for the project, you get a Davis Bacon determination. And then that determination is then inserted into the bid documents or referenced in the bid documents, and therefore the contractors would have to follow those minimum salaries for each classification. And if you've ever had an opportunity to look at a Davis Bacon issuance of wage classifications, there are many, many different classifications and for different regions because they have different amounts for different areas. Now, administration of that aspect will occur upon the management company during the construction process because there is a very extensive process in which people have to be interviewed in the field to ensure that they are being paid Davis Bacon wages, but they also have to submit bi-weekly payroll certifications. And those are all collected and certified and signed off. And at this time, there is no reason to have a Davis Bacon issuance because we're not bidding the project right now. That is done when you bid the project. So, we're very, very familiar. And Mr. Van Detten, as city engineer, did I summarize it pretty correct?
And as a matter of fact, I mean, I'm fully aware of that. You know, I've actually audited a number of these programs. And it's just a matter of, I mean, it's not like we've never built a building before. And so, we've got a pretty good idea of job classifications. And last I noticed, we were still in Metro Detroit. So, you know, perhaps, you know, the question is, what is going to be the prevailing wage on this project for various different wage classifications? That is already, we have a pretty good idea of what that is. I mean, we're not the only community in the entire metropolitan area that's building something on a federal contract. But these are basic questions. And the reason why I get frustrated is because I ask a question and somebody should know the answer. And, you know, I'm not trying to be nasty, but people really need to come to this meeting prepared.
Well, Council-
The other thing I would like to know is, you know, this, it says it's a high-speed intercity passenger rail program. What high-speed intercity passenger rail is going to come through this station?
Madam Mayor and Council, this station is part of the high-speed rail corridor connecting the Detroit Metropolitan Region to the Chicago Metropolitan Region.
And when will that service begin?
It is in the process of being implemented right now. And to my knowledge, MDOT has purchased all of the rail line from the station in Detroit to the Indiana border. And they're in the process of upgrading that, those rails, the rail or tracks to allow for higher speeds.
I hope they purchase some in the city of Detroit because the speed limit on the Amtrak in the heart of Detroit is between eight and 12 miles an hour. It takes almost two hours to get to Ann Arbor right now. So, I think, again, my concern is that we're selling this as something that's going to be new and great. And if it were, then it would be much more exciting than it is. That's my concern. So, we're spending $8.5 million. We're not getting any new rail service. There won't be high-speed rail, even though it's being funded by high-speed rail. We have to oblige Davis Bacon wages. We don't know what the Davis Bacon wages are. How big is the building?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
3,000 square feet.
How big?
3,000 square feet.
And we're spending $8.5 million and getting a very small building. And my final question is, why is Birmingham not part of this if we're actually going to be on Birmingham's side, even though it's on the right of way?
That was their decision on their-
Because I know they started with us, but what did they, I mean, I know they didn't want to, weren't able to purchase land for a different proposal, but it seems like this actually might be interesting for them.
It's not before us this evening.
Mr. Zerlang?
I really can't speak on behalf of Birmingham, but one thing I heard is that there was an issue with the property acquisition in terms of trying to get to the platform on the Birmingham side. And the property owner wanted much more than market value. And I think that was the driving force for Birmingham. But again, I can't speak on their behalf. Thank you.
Mrs. Bittner, the vote, please.
Councilmember Hauerlag?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the proposed amendment to the three-year budget retention of two sergeants and two police officers. I'll move the resolution and read it. Whereas the early retirement incentive program concession initiative not only reduced reliance on fund balance, but also created projected revenues exceeding projected expenditures for the first two years of the three-year budget. And whereas the International City County Management Association, ICMA, in their organizational restructuring and economic stability, sustainability study indicates that the police department will not be sustainable unless four of the 38 sworn positions slated for elimination are retained. Therefore, be it resolved, the Troy City Council approves the city manager's recommendation to incorporate these four police department positions in the three-year budget.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
When I speak in support, I'm very pleased to see that we'll have two sergeants. I think that point of contact is absolutely crucial. And I'm glad to see that that's being included. So, again, we're looking at 38 gone. We were able to save four of the 38. Please realize the severity of this. I'm happy to see that we can do this much.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Fleming?
I'm in full support of the police department and whatever staffing we need to provide Troy a safe place. And that's what we all want. That's what we pay taxes for. My concern, again, is similar to previous vote. Why do we need to do this tonight? What's the sense of urgency? I keep seeing that, you know, I'm looking around the table, and three of us are going to be gone in a couple of months. Could be four. Three people that are sure to be left are Councilman Slater, Councilwoman McGinnis, and myself. And we're making decisions on a budget, if I'm not mistaken, is 2014. Am I correct? So, I understand we need to plan and we look as far out as we can. But this is going to be addressed several other times, folks. We may be adding more than four police, but we make like this is a big deal tonight. And certainly, I'm in favor of adding. But I'm just wondering why we need to do this tonight when we're going to be voting on these budgets several times between now and 2014.
Madam Mayor? Actually, Councilwoman Fleming, we began discussing back at, with the ICMA report and felt that it was very crucial that we have sustainability. I think that it is a very scary proposition for this community when we cannot sustain our wonderful police department that folks rely on and that we're so proud of. So, we've been discussing this for quite some time. I think that putting off decisions for others to make is not a wise decision because we said we needed to do certain things and certain things in order. This was one of our top priorities. So, this needs to occur so that certainty is there that this is occurring. And then we can move on to the other things that we can do or cannot do.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
And it's unfortunate that those of us who are speaking, except for Wade, may not be here. But I also believe that, what I said before, safety is a community value in this town. And we know from an outside source that actually can calibrate these things that we need four officers.
Right.
So, why would we not put them in the budget and run the risk of it being spent on something else and then not be able to put them back later? Do this. We know we do this. Everybody at this table says that safety is important in this community. So, let's do this part. And let's get these funds obligated for these officers to go back and then deal with the rest of it. This is something we know we have to do to keep the community safe. We know that we don't have proper supervision without those sergeants and we don't have proper boots on the ground without those officers. Again, safe enough doesn't cut it.
Anyone else who wants to speak on this? Councilwoman Slater?
And I think the one thing that is separating us from other communities right now is a three-year budget. You're seeing what some of these other communities, their failings are because they're doing it one year at a time. We're doing it three years at a time, and that's what's saving us right now. We need to plan for three years from now. And this is a plan for three years from now. We need to keep doing that. We don't want to stop doing that. So, we need to do this.
Council, did you ask for the floor? Mayor Protem Kerwin?
I don't know.
I can tell who was next. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I guess my other concern is that if there are candidates out there that would be looking to bring the level down to something less than what we had in 1978, that would be a big concern, too. I think that we all agree that minimum staffing is a bad enough place to be. So, I don't think that will change based on who comes forward if people still value that public safety as a priority, so.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
I do appreciate the council member bringing up candidates running for office because I do recall a candidate running for office with the support police on the bottom. It's disappointing that it has taken this long since we talked about it in that room months and months ago. Oh, no, let's wait and see how the E-RIP works and all of that. We have been short in this area. We need some direct reports. This is a big gaping hole. Let's add back the four. Worry about the others as you're sitting here. Be concerned about that going forward. But in the meantime, let's vote on this.
Eric.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Rest assured, I came to this meeting tonight fully intending to vote for these poor officers. You know, I would never voted against the police department. Don't intend to. Take a lot of pride in the police and the safety of this community. My question was simply, why do we need to do it tonight? What I've heard is, we have a three-year rolling budget. It's important that we do this now. We set the stage. But just so everybody's aware, this is not something that's happening now. We might need to add more police. Let's face it, we don't know if the ICMA study is right or not. You know, they've got an educated guess. But four officers, it may need, we may need to have eight. I don't know. Let's see what it takes as this city changes. If new businesses come in the next three years, we might need more. I don't know. As technology changes, let's wait and see. But I'm certainly in favor of adding these four policemen. I wasn't trying to allude that I was against it. I was just asking the question as to why the sense of urgency tonight. But yes, I will vote for it.
Further discussion on the motion?
Mayor, right.
Yes.
I'll defer to Mr. Harlan.
Councilman Hauerlag and then Mr. Zerlang.
I was just going to make two comments. And one is, I know the ICMA, here's what the ICMA assessment said. It said, "Option one," which was our plan, "is viable. Examination of the staffing model titled 'Option One' is a viable staffing plan for police operations. Several modifications of the plan are offered to improve and strengthen this model and maintain reasonable service levels." The full implementation of Option One, however, cuts too deep in the organizational staffing, excuse me, the organization staffing level. And it is recommended that four additional sworn positions be added to the final model. I thought it was important to read actually what it said. And then the other thing is that I'm actually really happy because the department is essentially paying for these positions. And, you know, I've said in the past is that, you know, if employee groups are willing to give, then we will be able to maintain additional positions in their service area. So, I think that it's pretty much unanimous that we want to add these positions back.
Mr. Zerlang? Do you ask to comment?
Yes. And I think what I'll do is I'll save my comment for the study session. It won't be redundant.
Okay. Mrs. Bittner, the vote?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Hauerlag?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the consent agenda. Council members, do you have any items you want exempted? Hearing none, can we have the resolution to approve all the consent agenda items?
So moved. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we approve all the consent agenda items with this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Hauerlag?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Memorandums, council referrals, council comments. Anyone have any council comments? Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Madam Mayor, just a housekeeping detail. We, last week, finalized the boards and committee list. And there are still some appointments out there just floating. I think it would serve our committee members well now that they know the future of their board if we would also make appropriate appointments over the next few meetings, if we could.
Yes. The letters to the committees that we dissolved, the letters went out thanking them each individually for their service and explaining. And then after we have the report, the information that we asked the city attorney to check on, when those come back, then we'll have the other things. But there are some other committees, yes, that we have some dates that, you know, we need to fill in. Reappointments are-
Yeah, because some of them have been waiting-
Right.
Months, if not years-
Right.
For an appointment.
Okay. Good. The other thing is, I mentioned under council comments, I'm mentioning again the item that came forward from Mr. Zerlang's office in the afternoon to you folks in the form of a memo that I'm going to talk about a little bit when we have our study session, too. But I wanted to comment for the audience because some people don't watch the study sessions. They watch through the meeting and then they go do other things, you know. And that is, there had been some discussion out in the government communities in general about what is happening with regard, fund balances in other communities as well as ours. And so, I asked Mr. Zerlang about that. And we found some information that was provided to council and council candidates on other communities and where, that are similar in size and scope to our community and where they stand on their funds and their fund balance, et cetera. And that is on Farmington Hills, Royal Oak, Southfield, and Grand Rapids. And with the data that is provided, they are not in very good shape for one of the reasons Councilwoman Slater referred to is that they're doing things on a year-to-year basis. Although, you look at Grand Rapids, they look like they're doing five-year things, too. But they also have an income tax, which is an interesting thing. But their fund balance for Farmington Hills is very alarming because here's a community that's done so well all these years, but they have not made some of the hard decisions early on that we did. And again, we took a lot of heat from people about what we were doing. Why are we doing this? Why are we alarming everybody by talking about what we need to do? We were actually being proactive. And so, now with what we've done with the early retirement incentive program and the concessions that we asked staff members to take, we're in better shape now than some of those other communities. And so, again, instead of knocking us for what we're doing, we actually should be getting compliments for what we're doing because this community has always been very fiscally responsible and frugal, actually, in all the years that I've been involved and even before that. And I'm sure is going to continue that way with new council members. But people need to be reminded that we make these tough decisions and this is paid off. So, thank you for the information there. I wanted to make sure that people in the community get that information, too. Any other council comments?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Really, it was, to be honest, because I was finishing four years, but in the first two years, that really wasn't the way. We weren't even having residents paying their full amount to use park and rec facilities. We knew that, and we took some heat for that. Remember the senior students who came and said, "I don't want to pay that much for volleyball" despite the fact that it costs that?
Right.
We were not charging how much it was to call the trash away. So, there were some points over time, "Oh, no, we can never talk about raising that." It was during these past two years that we said, "We're unsustainable at this rate." And shared the news because this is what we're facing. We're not a growing community at this point. We desire to be so, but this has been a rough ride. And I do wish our new council coming in, in just four meetings, the best of luck, but please be aware that we have paved the way. And looking at that three-year document really does, I think, inform those who are willing to be informed to buy it and look at it. Enough on that. I do want to say something else. I do see we have a resident in the audience, and it does remind me that we had talked about looking at a greener ordinance in terms of development because we know now developers can come in and really just have, you know, 90, 100 trees, 90 go, 10 are left. And I would hope that in these next coming meetings, that that can come forward because that's been a desire for a long time. Whether that ordinance can come, I know that the Planning Commission is looking at some things like that. That should come forward when we're talking about trying to green up Troy on some of those ordinances coming forward. So, I'll write a memo.
Further council comments? If not, we're in recess and we'll reconvene in the other room for the study session.
[Crosstalk] 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 [Crosstalk]
Steady mode here. And Mr. Zerlag, we're going to begin with this core subject.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. Last week, we spoke about a number of items as a result of having essentially an average in our three-year budget of about having revenues over expenditures by about $600,000 per year. We take a look at the first two years, we have revenues exceed expenditures. The third year, we have expenditures again higher than revenues, but if you take a three-year look, we're in pretty good shape. Revenues are still declining after that, and I don't have a very good level of comfort as to when we're going to hit bottom and start bouncing back up. I'm hoping it's the fiscal year 2014-15, when the residential, commercial, industrial classes start to regain value once again. Of course, we'd have to have that gain in conjunction with the heavily amended requirements. But having said that, number one, thank you for retaining four out of the 38 positions slated for removal. That's in the third year of this budget, and that's why I included it at this point in time, because essentially, the city council adopted a three-year budget. I'm instructing Mr. Darling to work with various staff members. We begin as early as next month to work on our budget cycle again. So, it'll help us to know those numbers are baked into, it'll essentially become year two instead of year three, that will be in helping again for fiscal year 2015, as presented in the new meeting in the city council. But staying on the positive, I'd like to talk about, give a summary of the 24-hour protocol for snowplowing all streets after a four-inch snow event, all major local streets. And I was, I spoke with Mr. Brett Baer, the director of the Road Commission for Oakland County. He advised me that, yes, the county will return, return the $250,000 stipend that they gave us last year to plow snow this year if we take care of county roads. And based upon the direction I get, head nodding tonight, I'll call Mr. Baer and look at the next agenda if I can, have a contract to take over snow removal on behalf of the county. It may take a little bit longer, because they have certain reviews they have to go through as well, but that's, that's my target, if not first meeting in October.
Why are you there?
Yes.
They're going to give us $250,000.
Right.
What is the actual cost?
Depends on how-
Based on the other years that we've had, isn't it?
Tim is our snow expert. I'm just giving the brief summary. No, that's fine. You will not suppose anything. I just wanted to give a summary so that the council and the audience knows the direction that we possibly could take. That, of course, is subject to your collective wisdom. What we can do is, by taking the county's $250,000, and by adding about $425,000 to our general fund, we can go back to a 24-hour snow protocol. We can do that without having to hire any additional personnel. And that's because we've done some positive things. We have consolidated all maintenance functions in public works. We have begun and continued cross-training on employees in many aspects. The ICMA recommendation to reinstate eight positions in public works, essentially it was five in public works and three in parks, but they're now all under the public works umbrella. It enables us to have this protocol without hiring any new additional people. There will be a cost, but it won't be a new higher cost with $2080. Tim, again, will get into that. And we can make that happen. In terms of enhancing our major roadway network from a general category of what we call high fair to good, you're going to hear from Bill Huttery and Steve Vandette, we don't have the money for that. That would take about a $25 million initial downstroke first year, and an additional $7 million per year for budget every year thereafter. The money's not there. But again, Bill and Steve and Mark will get to become more specific in that regard. The other issue that we spoke about last, or two weeks ago, my day, was going to a 32-hour work week for several departments, essentially all departments, with the exception of library, police, fire, and some areas of public works. And that will adversely affect the quality of service to our residents and businesses. It'll impair our inability, it will impair our ability to retain and attract employees. And although that's a critical issue, I don't think we should discuss it at this point in time for a number of reasons. One is that it's currently outside of our three-year budget. And as Council Fleming indicated, we'll be a new city council. We'll talk about that third year in our budget coming this, this spring. We also need to get a better comfort zone for our revenue line in the out-years of 2015 and beyond. I'm hearing different things at this point. I'm hearing that we're still going to decline past 2015. I'm hearing that we're going to bounce up in some sectors, but not in others. I'm hearing that we need to be positive, and I agree with that, in terms of economic development and attracting new businesses. And we've got to go through the tribunals yet, and this winter will have a better handle on, on the revenue line that we need to match, and we can speak more intelligently on how to address that 40-hour work week at that, at that point. And having said that, I'd like now to essentially turn this over to Mr. Richman to give a little detail about the snow and ice control level of service. Hopefully, he has too many questions he has. And then, of course, segue into Mr.'s Vandette and Huttery and Gilbert about the major streets.
All right. The City of Troy Snow and Ice Control Level of Service, you will have seen several of these slides from last fall, because many of them still apply to what our discussion is going to be tonight. We're here as consideration to take a look at what it would cost, and operationally, what we'd have to do to get back to the historical high level of service that folks were used to prior to last winter. This slide basically gives you information about road segments, the number of trucks, pavement condition, what we do in our local roads as far as hills, curves, and intersections, and how that is delayed with modified levels of service, or if the county were to come back in and handle all the snow and ice control on their roads. Our local road plowing, snow vents over four inches, we have not changed any of these scenarios. There's still a 24-hour operation, 24 to 72 hours under the modified, and 72 hours plus if the county were to come in and handle their snow removal on their road system. That hasn't changed. We're still responsible for all of the roads in red. The county's roads are in the lime green, and the purple is the state highway. The historical level of service, we would send one truck out on each of the 14 routes that we had for major roads, county roads, and there's a few industrial road segments that are included in that. All of these items listed are in that chart and really have not changed from our discussion This chart is the same as what we had last year in reference to cost by contractor rates and the city rates for labor and equipment. We do need to make a statement down below, basically what extends what John was saying. City manager restructured all maintenance operations into the public works department with cross-training across divisions, and we're continuing to do that. That cross-training has not been completed. That's going to take, you know, I would say a couple of years to get all folks cross-trained that we intend to use for all of our operations. The ICMA report recommended, and city council retained, eight DPW staff, three from parks and five from the street division, to make us sustainable. In order to provide the 24-hour snow and ice control, it was critical that those were put back in at that time, because it allows us enough staff in order to go back to our 24-hour operation without hiring additional people. If we didn't have those eight people, we wouldn't be standing here today and being able to have the staff, equipment, and all the resources to do that. And now we get to the point where it's restoration of the 24-hour level of service. What do we have to do? Well, we need to put $3,300 back into the budget for labor. We need to put that same $3,300 hours back in for equipment. We have to look at what our salt needs would be for an average winter. We need to look at our contractor plowing that was previously part of our 24-hour operation, and these are contractors that would plow local roads. And we have three events, on average, of four inches or more. Each of those events, on average, would be around $45,000. Sidewalk and parking lot additional costs to contract. In order to have staff to get back to the restoration of the 24-hour level of service, what we need to do is, some of the operations that the park staff, which has been reduced in order to use those park staff to do road snow and ice control, we need to contract some of that out and make sure that those winter maintenance options are still carried through in order to keep people safe in our parking lots and sidewalks. We come through, the total is about $675,000, and I say it's about, because if anyone can tell me exactly when it's going to snow and how much it's going to snow, you know, I'd be glad to give you the numbers. I'm looking at some averages here. We maintained the county roads for nine years under a 24-hour operation. Last year, I don't think that we can take any of the statistics and use them in what we're talking to today. The Road Commission for Oakland County, roughly $250,000, it was $249,691 is what they gave us the last three years without any increases. City of Troy funding, we need an additional $425,000 in order to, on an average winter, get back to our 24-hour service.
Could I ask a question on that chart, or is that not right?
No, go ahead.
Just a couple. Nadine, if salt, you mean deicing?
Yeah, deicing. It's salt, it's beet juice, it's kaolstein chloride, it's all the things that we use in our arsenal to fight ice and snow.
I just figured that. Now, I'm very pleased to see that the contracting out would be for sidewalk and parking lots, because I think it's wonderful when our own employees who know our own streets and those eccentricities are the ones who are working on those streets, and the contracting people are in a parking lot or on a sidewalk. So, A-plus on that.
And a little extension on what you just mentioned is that there's not contractors out there that are equipped with the larger, heavier-
Right.
-equipment that has the technology on it, and they're not willing to go out and spend the money into those pieces of equipment, where it's much more reasonable that they come in with smaller trucks, with pickups with blades, you know, lawn mowers that they use all summer, that they can throw a snow blower or a plow on the front to clear sidewalks. It's more economical for them, and we'll be able to go out and solicit those types of contractors, where we have a difficult time, as it is, getting contractors to help us plow subdivision streets, because they don't have the larger equipment.
And we have, we have the equipment, the equipment, and we have the best fleet.
Next slide.
Before you go on, I want my question answered. The funding for, from the county is $250,000, but when I look at the map, I see that only Coolidge and Rochester and Square Lake and Waddles are Troy roads. All the rest are green, are county roads. If the county had to pay the full amount for us to plow all the roads of the 24-hour, what would that cost be?
We also have a piece of maple and a piece of linoise and Stevenson Highland.
Oh, a little, oh, yeah, a little tin of these, okay.
And, and-
Not much.
And it's about one-third to two-thirds. So, there's two-thirds of the county road system, major roads in Troy, and one-third is, is the city's. In our nine-year history of doing county roads, there was two years, actually, that we took more money from the county than what we expended.
That's because we all know that low years.
Those were the low years. And, and they're both ends of the spectrum. In 2002, there was $41,000 that we did not spend, that we took in from the county. In 2010, there was $5,500 that we took in and we didn't spend. On the other end of the spectrum, you're looking at approximately $270,000 in 2008 and '09 that we spent over and above what we took in.
Double.
Double. If you throw out, you know, some of the high stuff and the low stuff, we spent about $70,000 more over the nine-year period than what we took in. If you throw all those years in, which I have a feeling that is just a little high, because 2008 and '09 were two of the snowiest winters since 1918 and 1919. Those two years were just-
Killers.
-killers. And so, if you take and put them all together, we spent $92,000 a year more than what we got from the county, on average, over those nine years. Hopefully, that is the information that you're looking for.
Right, but more in the-
$92,000 on average per year over the nine years.
Fine, you said you had some-
And another, another component that you have to take into consideration is, last year, we made a difficult decision to do things a little bit differently. So, the costs were not what they would have been, so we can't really compare that.
No, and I didn't use those figures in with these comparisons.
Right. Plus, we had the second snowiest February ever, you know, so, yeah. Councilman, fine?
Just to clarify, the contractor for local road plumbing, that's strictly subdivision streets?
That's strictly subdivision streets. We, once we finish our major road maintenance with our staff, and the storm stops, we take every available parks, water and sewer, and street division people and put them in there. And at that point, we would never be able to plow all the subdivision streets without assistance. And that $45,000 represents about a third of our local road system at the end of the 24 hours.
Okay. Yes, councilman?
Of course, this is the additional cost for restoration of 24 hours. What was, project on the cost to be if we worked 24 hours, come back in '72?
I don't have that budgeted number.
I have a budgeted number, I just don't remember what it was.
And I don't have that off the top of my head, and I don't have that with me at the present.
We can get it there. Just wondering how much this is over the budget?
It's about $425,000.
Yes. I don't know what the original budget was, so I don't want this total budget.
For 25 left.
Yeah. There must be something- I don't have money to budget it.
This $675,000 is all roads in Troy at a 24-hour protocol, right?
Yes.
All right, so it's not necessarily $425,000 more, because there's already something in the budget.
No, this is, this is $675,000 more than we currently have budgeted-
Okay.
-for our modified operation.
That's right. All right.
This is more.
Right.
Because that's what we asked today, to get to the 24-hour, what would it cost? That's what we're looking at.
Right.
Okay. And I just can't remember what we budgeted.
And I don't-
This is over and above.
But whatever it is, this is more.
$675 is over and above, and we can get $250 from the county. So, our $425,000 is really out of pocket, what taxpayers' dollars would be needed to be infused into the budget.
And then mechanically, for this year, there would be two steps. One step would be to-
One step would be to approve of the agreement with R C O C. to take their stipend and file the major roads this winter, and the other would be to essentially pass a budget and then a resolution, taking money at this point in time out of the general fund, and then we swerve things away when the audit came in and during the next budget segment.
And we would be able to do this because of the savings of, from E-Rip and the concessions that the employees gave, because there is money that would be available to do it, and this was our second priority after keeping the four police officers.
And that's, that's the point, Your Honor. Please correct me if I'm mistaken, but what I had heard is that in terms of priorities, number one was to reinstate four out of the thirty-eight positions slated for elimination in the police department to achieve sustainability.
Right.
Number two was restore the forty-hour work week, but that's outside of our three-year budget. Number three was restoration of a twenty-four-hour level of service for snow plowing, and that is not a recurring cost unless City Council says it is. We can look at this every budgetary year and see if there's, if we can meet our other priorities and have money left over for this. Number four, essentially, was the major street issue, which is going to be discussed by Steve and Phil. That was my understanding.
You're correct, I misspoke when, because you said that we're not going to talk about the forty-hour work week because it's in the outside of three years, so that's why it moved up, this moved up to second, for this group.
For this year.
Okay, yes. Councilman, fine?
I think, based on what we had last year, this is, this is good news, to get back the twenty-four-hour level of service. And if we don't know, how do you track your costs to know what the actual costs are each year, because that's going to be something, it's going to be interesting, because last year, when I was in disaster, I'm curious, how do we track the costs and what do we know we actually spend here on snow plowing?
Everything is tracked through our financial software, New World.
So we can see it every month?
Well, there's a delay in how all that information gets in there. We can certainly track it, we can't, on the first of the month, tell you what we did that last month, because a lot of that, there's delay.
Cash versus accrual basis, I understand that, but you're on a cash basis, I understand. If you will know, from now on.
Nadine? But, but, the council is very familiar, because you, you update us after, after the storms. We've seen how much is left, so we're well aware of how much that is, so let's move on to some of the stuff we don't know.
Yeah, tell us why we use beet juice.
Just a question.
It's in areas.
Yes, Councilman, hard luck?
Is, now, the sidewalk and parking lots, is that all of the sidewalks that we're plowing right now, or, I guess, would that be, I mean?
That's additional cost into over and above what we would spend ourselves to do that, because contracted costs, we went out last week and did some review to make sure that those contracted costs we had last year would still be pretty solid, and so that would be all of our facilities and parking lots and sidewalks at those locations.
And city ones, yeah, people still need to do the major, like, I have to plow the Square Lake sidewalk there, or I haven't plowed myself.
Well, the city plows some major roads, sidewalks, I mean, I think Big Beaver is one. I guess what I, what I want to know is, the, are, are these contracted sections here, is that an issue of personnel, or is that an issue of equipment? It's personnel, isn't it?
Issue of personnel.
Personnel, yeah. You know, if there's any way we could solve that, you know, I, I guess, the thing I'm thinking is, I know we've bought a lot of equipment, and I just want to make sure it gets used, and, you know, if there's any way we could do that in-house, I would be happier.
I would say that we look at that on a storm-by-storm basis, you know, you can't take all your labor on a seven or eight-inch or a twelve-inch snowstorm and, and try to do that at the end of the storm, but, you know, if we get a two-inch, inch and a half, half-inch, we still have the ability to treat sidewalks and some parking lots, and the parks department last year put out a contract with that exactly in mind, and we were kind of holding, we put out our community of block rent, snow ice control, and the parking lot snow and ice control, and if we were to go back to contractors for the local roads, I'm sitting on a contract right now that we're reviewing, put that all out so that we can take the best advantage, and we would put that out in different proposals so that somebody could bid on it all, or smaller companies would bid on it and we can see what the best value is, so that's something that we've been talking about and working on behind the scenes. This gets to the question about, is equipment available? The city has the equipment necessary to perform the twenty-four snow, twenty-four-hour snow and ice control operation. Is salt available? This, this concerns me, you know, until I took a look, and on an average winter, we're somewhere between ten and fourteen thousand tons of salt. That's around, right about twelve thousand tons annually. Our maximum capacity to purchase salt through the state contract this year would be eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty tons. Now, you still have the ability to go to those vendors and ask, but there's no guarantee that they can provide or will provide to you. We can also take a look and see what the county has, if we are going to take over that operation, we can speak to them in regards of, you know, if we get to a certain point, can we buy salt through them, because they, they purchase enough salt, and I don't believe that they're on a state contract, they, they have a contract of their own, and so there's some possibilities there. And we don't get to that point at the end of the winter, in worst-case scenario, so we really have to watch what we do all winter long, over and above what we normally do on a firstborn basis. So that, that is my biggest concern, there would be that material and the availability beyond the eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty tons. Where will the thirty-three hundred man-hours of labor come from? As I mentioned before, street parks and water employees, but we'd need to kind of track out that parking lot and snow and ice control that was previously performed by our employees in-house, and there was a cost to that. That's the end of the presentation. Any other questions?
Yeah, you didn't tell us about
Other than the beet juice question, which As far as beet juice, we purchase that and have about a twenty percent beet juice mixed with magnesium chloride, calcium chloride, and a few other items. And basically, that material is pumped out of the ground as a brine, and then we add the beet juice to it. What the advantages of beet juice are, and there's not every community or county uses, but we've gone to some seminars and spoken to some county organizations out throughout the state, and what they have found and what we found in our first years of using beet juice is that there's a residual that's left on the pavement once the storm is gone, and that residual helps to extend timeframe where we don't have to go back out. We found that in some of our operations, where typically we would be out salting at eleven, twelve o'clock at night, that we'd get a call back from the police department, because things were starting, temperatures were dropping, things were starting to ice up again at four o'clock in the morning. We felt that there were several storms, we didn't have to go back out at those times. We actually had savings in labor and putting out more salt and, and equipment use by using beet juice. And it's not a hundred percent, it's just a twenty percent additive to it. There are people out there that say fifteen percent's the best mix, other people say thirty-five percent is the best mix. We've kind of logged in on that, that twenty percent. And as far as cost, the beet juice itself is, we've been able to get it for less than two dollars a gallon. When you look at some of the other costs of the brine, you know, you're looking at eleven cents a gallon. And that was a factor in how we put that mixture together, too. We use the beet juice greatly in the two areas that we have natural lakes around, where we don't want to have that additional salt put in. And we actually went in on the first year, and we're going to do it again this year, and we took water samples beforehand, we took water samples after the wind, and we verified that there was no change in what the chemistry of the water was. So that was important to us, to verify that. As far as the greatest cost savings for us, for all those who live where those lakes are, and we used to put sand on the streets, the cost for the, for the treatment has stayed the same, but our great savings has been cleanup after the winter. We spent a whole week sweeping streets and cleaning out catch basins, and some of that stuff naturally got into the lakes and so forth. And that was about a twelve thousand dollar savings that we didn't have to do cleanup, and, and people didn't have to track it into their homes, I mean, that stuff was not the best, but it was, at the time, you know, what was necessary, so.
Councilman Slater, did you have a question? Did we miss you?
Well, no, I just kind of had a statement. I think everybody at the table is in favor of putting our protocol back to twenty-four hours, and I think what we needed to hear were three, three things tonight, and I think they've all been answered. One was, can we get the stipend back? One was a question about manpower, whether we were going to look at part-time or whatever, I think that question's been answered tonight along with equipment. So I'm looking at the historical page here, and I think we quickly need to make a decision tonight to move forward so that we can look at contracts, look at salt, and all those other items, so. I've heard what I needed to hear tonight, and it looks like we can move forward. I think it's a good use of the extra money that we have available, and I think it's something that citizens really want, and I think it's what we want, and I think we just need to nod our heads and move forward, this is what we want to do, from my perspective.
It certainly was one of the things that we heard at the community conversations that, you know, we had, but of course, we make our decisions about snow removal before the snow starts to fly. Last year, of course, we didn't know we were going to have that much, and this year, we do know, because of funds, that we can make the adjustment. And my big bugaboo has always been, since we have so many county roads, that I want people to know that the county doesn't pay for the complete cost of doing that, but yes, that's part of, they're in our city, and people travel those roads, and the jury of counsel wants to, you know, to do that, but I think it's important to give those numbers to people so they understand that, because there is a cost always involved with doing something at a higher level.
I think we all recognize that, I might, I think I said last week, my opinion has changed since last year, and we can't rely on the county to take care of our snow removal, it's just not going to happen, so we need to just move forward and get care of that ourselves.
Councilman, fine?
I agree with Councilman Slater, I think we got the nods around the table, and for going fine, I have a how question.
An how question?
How. How do we determine, or when do we determine, or who determines, really, when we get the trucks out, how do we jumpstart? Because last year, I think part of the problem was, we were behind the eight ball because we started late. Who makes that decision? How do we go about determining that?
I don't believe that we started late. We, you know, part of our, our protocol was not to address items until we had a two-track, and so we do get out there later, and that does delay treatment, and, you know, on that first matrix, it's in there. But moving forward, we get our initial call from the police department when we are not in, working on a regular, you know, from seven-thirty till four o'clock, public work staff makes those decisions. We're talking all day long, every time there's snowstorms are predicted to come in, but afterwards, when we're gone and we're sleeping, we get calls from the police department to initiate that, and then we go out and evaluate as to how many trucks, because we don't just call all fourteen trucks in automatically. We'll look at the weather, we'll look at the road conditions, and every storm is evaluated on its merits. It's just not an automatic thing, and it never has been. So to answer your question about where we get that call from, initially, it comes from the police department to let us know that we've had an event happening, but we make those decisions, our field supervisor and superintendent of streets have a certain level that they make, and, believe me, they call me in the middle of the night when things get to the point where we have to, you know, elevate because of severity of the weather, and it isn't just the number of inches of snow, it has to do with temperatures dropping, temperatures rising, and we work together to, to try to fight the storm most effectively this week.
Okay. Oh, Council, Mayor Peter Curran, if something else, I'm sorry.
I know Councilmember Bill Tramini had a hand up a minute ago. Yeah, I do, and I, if I might, back to the beet juice, the pink roads. Last year was not the first year we used them. Have you used that before?
No, we tried several different products over several different years, but last year was the first year that we incorporated into all of the livable de-icer that we put onto the salt.
But that was based on using the previous years and finding that it was basically effective, and it was effective with a twenty-four-hour protocol. Perhaps maybe not so much on a two-track protocol, but, well, you don't know.
You don't know, but we, we still saw last year the residual in those operations that it was there, so last year was a learning curve.
And it stretches. Okay.
Nadine?
Yes?
Just a couple of things, again, this is a one-year, it's not like when people look at the library, you have enough to do, this is a one-year. Next year's council will have to look at this and deal with it again, but I'm looking at the City of Troy historical slide at this moment, I know that you were too, the check at the mark, this goes to Councilmember Fleming's question, which really had to do with that original storm. The final bulletin that says, police department request for emergency service on I-75 were responded to by City of Troy, and what we saw on that first storm, as we recall, a lot of stuff was happening on I-75 with the ice, and that then took a lot of our staff onto I-75 off our roads as trying to deal with it. This is a good protocol, I think it's very, very important. We do recognize that's a state highway, it's not ours, but it is, it is a safety concern. Finally, I am in full agreement, we need to do this, absolutely do, and it fits well with our goals. When you look at our goals, again, provide a safe, clean, and livable city, provide effective and efficient local government, including demonstrate excellence in community services, attract and retain business investment. We heard from residents, or a resident tonight, specifically about comments regarding last year, and I'm very pleased to see that these goals are being addressed, and that we, as a policymaking body, choosing to make it work. None of it would happen unless we had the cooperation from our own employees, and the only reason it's funded now is because they, they all gave back that ten percent.
Okay, is there anything else we need to talk about?
Major streets, there was also
You said there's no money, so.
We didn't really ask for that, I mean, it was a long time ago.
I'd love to hear. I have a question, actually, you know, and
That's gonna happen.
Go ahead. Councilman, hard luck?
No, my question, yes, on, on major roads.
Oh, okay.
You know, last time we were here, I was, I guess my point was, I wanted to know if we were able to allocate additional we were able to allocate additional funds for, say, slab replacement for major streets, if that is something that could actually be utilized.
County, but obviously, they're much more willing to do work. That's kind of...
I'm sorry, Bill, if I may, and I know it's getting late, but staff spent a lot of time putting this together. It's about 15 minutes. I think it'll answer a lot of questions.
Go through it, Fred.
It'll answer, I think it'll answer a lot of questions. It'll also help educate the public in terms of what's going on in the major road system.
We were just giving Bill a hard time because he's used to that, he's his big family that...
I gave these guys a brief tight time for half a bed, and they want to sit in front of me, and I was like, oh.
Bill, I go way back. No way back.
Stay away.
All right, well, the test of those, I was asked to talk a little bit about major roads, specifically about maintenance construction on city and county roads. What we want to talk tonight, real basic questions, talk a little bit about current road conditions, such as future road conditions, funding, and then finally end up with where does that lead up? Basic question, I kind of came up with this, this is an input from staff, is should the city spend more city funds to fix the worst roads in the city regardless of jurisdiction? And how would that be funded? And that kind of goes back to doing slab work on county roads and things like that. As current policy, the city only spends money on county roads when it's used to match something else, whether it be federal funds. Tri-party have even done a 50-50 project in the past on long lanes. The reason we're looking at that more and more, this is taken from an article last week in the Oakland Press, Brent Baer did a guest opinion piece. It's an interesting sort of points area. One of them, the county's had declining revenues for years, a major source of funds is Act 51. And it's even more so now. So they are looking at having some real issues going into the future. State, you've heard before from the county, you've heard from other aides who were forced to do less with much less. This is one of my favorites, we're all going to have to get used to seeing more potholes on our roads. The county recognizes you're not going to be able to do a lot of the projects that they did in the past, and it's going to take longer to do fixes on the roads. But I like to look for the positive, and one of the things, 38 road commissions in the state of Michigan have turned over 100 miles of paved roads into gravel because they didn't have the money to maintain them. Golden County's not there yet, but it is something that's... That's it. This is the map Tim showed. The only thing I'll touch on here is the public's 27 miles of city roads to 43 miles of county. So there's a disproportionate amount of county roads in the city. This is a snapshot in time, what's called a pacer rating, and the pacer is essentially what we use to rate roads. This is the county federal aid map. So all the roads shown on here are federal aid eligible. So there's a couple roads on here that are not considered mild roads, Beach, Corporate, Hurst, to name the three. But they are federally eligible. They don't qualify normally for funding because the volumes are real low, which is not big roads like a Wilds, a Square Lake, the Big Beaver. Ratings, 1 to 3 is a four in the red. Essentially, those types of roads are roads that need to be reconstructed. They need some major work. 45s are fair. Typically, we'd be doing overlays on those types. Good roads, depending on where it sits within the good category, you're probably going to be looking at some cracks in those types of maintenance activities, nothing real nature. Those ratings, although labeled 2010 data ratings, they were used for those seminals, but they were actually done sometime in 2009. So what we looked at was, what projects have we completed and/or are under construction currently since that time? So some of the red goes away. And the Rochester's, beaches in the construction now. The county's done a couple of projects on crooks. One just started up here recently. Over the next, in our six-year capital improvement program, that's what's represented by the dashed boxes, and we are proposed, we have proposed in the six-year capital about nine miles of city major roads to get work on primarily, well, 4 miles on Wild, on Square Lake, 5 miles on Wilds. And the county has one project on Liberoi, and then a very small project down on 14 Mile from Campbell, the state of San Antonio. So this is what we anticipate or project that our major road network will look like at that time in 2016. So on the city system, we don't expect we're going to have any poor roads, but we do expect that we're going to have some very poor county roads. Another way to look at it, we chart some people like this more than we do other busy table. This is based on essentially current conditions with a few outdated projects. The city overall, city major roads, the 27 miles were about 60% in fair, 30%. So almost, almost 90% of roads are in kind of that high fair condition. County is kind of split, therefore, that represents about 6 miles, 14%, so about 3 miles. With the projects that we propose in the six-year capital, we're looking at getting almost two quarters of our system to a good condition, remainder in a fair condition with no poor major roads in the city system. The county's system, we expect, we almost got about a quarter of their system or 11 miles or so, we expect to be in the poor condition by that time frame. Just a little bit on funding, we get a good chunk of revenue from Act 51, and I'll touch on that a little bit more. There's also capital improvement in Village, 1.53, that not only pays for roads, but it pays for other capital improvements. Federal and state funds, tri-party, and then the 50-50. The county will handle the majority of their money from Act 51. They do receive federal and state grants, revenue from local governments and then fees and other revenue. The Act 51 created the NTF, the Michigan Transportation Funds, primarily funded from the gas tax and vehicle registration fees. Gas tax hasn't been increased since 97. At that time, it was increased by 4 cents. One cent of that went to the state curricular bridge fund, 3 cents was distributed. We get, and the county gets their distribution based on population and miles. The revenue generated has been stagnant since that gas tax increase, and it's actually been decreasing since '06, '07 due to a variety of reasons, more less miles driven, more fuel vehicles, hydro vehicles, all kinds of stuff. And the federal gas tax, which is kind of top of mind now, is set to expire at the end of the month, which could cause real serious issues with highway trust, except when you have the apartment service. And that's been fixed since '93. So that is a major discussion right now. And then I threw this one in, because we, in our department, we get a lot of questions about, well, why can't you build roads like they do in other counties as well? It's not so much that we can't build roads, as good as they do, because they're very similar. I mean, they may have thicker sections, some things like that. But if you look at this, the UK, Germany, and France, they're paying $4 a gallon in tax. 70% of what they pay at the pump is taxed. We pay about 40 cents. And that's, that doesn't rise if gas goes up, usually older, for '09, surprising gas was $2.50 in '09. But that 40 cents doesn't go up when it goes to $4 a gallon, it's still 40 cents. So that's really what it, what it shows, it's not so much that we don't build roads as good. We don't have the revenue or the resources to maintain them when they should be maintained, like a county road, John R., I mean, that road should be reconstructed. We don't want to do it again. $300,000 this year, we do slab work. That's what we have. Touch a little more closely to home. We include about, on average, about $4 million a year in the six-year capital improvement program for funding our major road projects. About 3.1 million of that comes from Act 51. And for purposes of Act 51, we've had this discussion at budget time, major roads actually are 50 cent miles in total, which includes the beaches, the corporates, all those. The road commission has a more convoluted formula for their distribution, because we're part of what's called the Troy District, which includes Troy and many of our surrounding neighbors. So they don't necessarily get the distribution just for Troy's or that district, and so it's spread through the district. When we talked to the county last year, we were kind of looking at this last year already, it's about 2.5 million, it's about $58,000 a mile. That's about what, if we were to try and come up with a number for Troy roads. So 2.5 million, if they spend all of that in Troy on 47 miles, or 43 miles, we budget about $4 million for 27 miles. And there've been discussions as far back as when Frank Urschenecker was here to take over county roads. That's never gone anywhere, and the money that goes for roads, the county does not want to do that. So funding issues. Act 51 revenues have been declining since '06, '07. Taxable values have decreased, which affects our capital load rate. General activity generating fees have decreased, vehicle registrations, just general economic activity has decreased. And then one thing I did put up there is federal funding. Major issues, Obama's plan, I haven't seen specifics on it yet. There's supposed to be a highway component, but I don't know what it is yet. So maybe it's a pot of oil at the end of the rainbow, I don't know. But it's something we'll look at and see if it's something we can utilize.
Just really quick, Bill, I know, in our meeting, you talked a little bit about the donor situation. Can you review that?
Yeah. Troy is a donor city. Golden County is a donor county, and Michigan is a donor state. I think the state, on the state level, we get back about 92 cents on the dollar. Some places like Wyoming, they get more back than what they put in. And that's a real high-level discussion. There's lots of discussion about different ways to replace the fuel tax, vehicle miles traveled. Lots of ITS-type stuff that's available through GPS, real simple technology, but it comes into the issue of privacy, and do you want somebody to know where you've been if you're going to pay at the pump based on the times you've been on the road? Because it makes sense to charge somebody more if they're on I-75 between 7 and 9 and 4 and 6 than 2:00 in the afternoon. If you're on the road when it's busiest, you're going to charge the most. But there's some states that are going to test it out, and there's a field, kind of field test going on, where you actually pull up to a pump, it reads a chip, it knows when you're on the road, it knows if you're on their peak hours, and it charges you tax based on that. So it's something that's coming in the future that's not there yet, because it requires a lot of new legislation. So where does that leave us? Obviously, with an overall decrease in revenue, county maintenance activities are reduced. I think you've heard that before, they're not looking at doing any more slab work, they're not looking at doing the Illinois lanes, they're looking at doing pothole patching. And we expect that road commission, roads will deteriorate faster because they can't get on them and maintain them. And so what that also means is that fixes in the future are going to cost more and be more time-consuming, rather than doing a quick Illinois way like the New Orleans or a Square Lake, John R. would need to reconstruct, rip out an entire road and rebuild it. It takes a lot longer, a lot more time, a lot more money, a lot more inconvenience than we can get in there and maintain it at the right time. So just to continue on, we do expect that city major road conditions, those 27 miles, are going to improve over the next five years, based on the three-year budget as well as the six-year capital improvement plan. We also expect that county road conditions are going to decline over that same timeframe. And when we look at what it would take to essentially bring the county road system up to a good or a high fair type condition, we're looking at about a $25 million initial investment, if you look at that first, the current year. Six miles of roads to reconstruct a road is between $5 and $6 million. Four to six, somewhere in that range. So if you've got six miles, then you're looking at about $25 million. And then to maintain it for that kind of forward, you're looking at about $7 million a year, well over $7 million a year. So realistically, not to be Debbie Deller here, but given our available funding taking over county roads, it's not a viable option. We just don't have the money to do it.
Please, the $300,000, $300,000 for John R., for example, you talked about slab replacement. Do we receive that? Do you replace the slabs? I'm just trying to understand what you were saying.
Yeah, it's the tri-party program, you contribute a third, the county, and then the road commission, everybody contributes a third. So it's a great program. And years ago, it used to be over $600,000. It's been cut in half. Most recently, as last year, it wasn't going to be continued, the county commissioners heard enough from their constituents that it was a very important program for them to reinstate it, reinstate it. So kudos to them for actually, they listened to the people, told them that they wanted it, they needed it, and they figured out how to do it. I don't know where the county took the money from, where the road commission took it from, because originally it wasn't supposed to be budgeted. But the project is actually going to be done, the slab work is done through DPW Slab Replacement Project, and that will be done in the spring.
Thank you for your question.
Councilman Hahn, if you have a question?
Just a couple of things. I imagine that, you know, if you had a larger budget to work with, you would be able to allocate more work, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, we have to allocate more work.
But, all right, so going back, I don't remember which slide it was on, but you said, since the county is not going to be spending as much as they should, when they do spend money, it's, they're going to get less money, less bang for the buck, because it'll be in worse shape, you know? So it's, it would be, in theory, it would be in our best interest, because they're going to only give us a certain amount of money, no matter what the condition of the road is. Which means that if the roads are in worse shape, it's in our best interest, for example, to spend money on the county roads, that when they do spend money, that we're getting more bang for the buck.
Well, in theory, if you go on the basis of a road is a road is a road. If you're in Troy, you're on a road, whether it be 75, Big Beaver, Wilds, you don't really care. Somebody's coming to your business, you're a client, you're friends, you're, what have you. You're driving on a road in Troy, that's all you know, you don't know whose jurisdiction it is. Issue becomes, you spend money in a county road, the county says, "Thank you very much", and they go fix a road in Ollie or Park Hill. So do we want to subsidize county road maintenance in the city of Troy, with the city of Troy taxpayer dollars, if it essentially benefits another community? Because they've got to fix the amount of money that they're going to spend annually. They get a budget that's approved, they run on October 1 fiscal year, that money's going to get used somewhere. Thankfully, we've had, from projects in Troy, the few on crooks, we've got one coming up on Liberoi, the federally funded jobs will participate in the share of the local part of that. But beyond that, Liberoi coming up and the project on 14 Mile, there are no more federal jobs funded currently through, I think, 2015. So 2016, maybe we'll get something else. But we don't see anything more coming. So if we were to throw a suit, yeah, I mean, overall, from a road management, a road network, road analysis-type scenario, payment management system, yeah, you want to fix the road when you should be fixing it. The roads in your community, you fix it. But the reality is, we spend $100,000, we spend a half a million, we spend a million dollars fixing John R. outside of the tri-party program, or so we added half a million to the tri-party program, we did $800,000 to the thousand, the $100,000 from the county and $100,000 to the road commission. Yeah, they would love it. The county will take it all day long. But that money that was spent there just means it's going to be less money that the county's going to spend in Troy, because they're going to use it somewhere else.
Well, I just think, I just think the big picture then, if we can, we should allocate more money to road...